Good evening. Welcome to the Lewiston City Council Regular Meeting of Monday, September 22, 2014. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Before we move on to the pledge, I would entertain a motion to change our executive session to include a section on litigation, 67-2345, F.
So moved. Second.
You've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Okay. Next up, the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Gentlemen, remove your caps.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay. Next up is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. And please, tonight, I guess we do have kind of a full agenda and we have a lot of people, I'm sure, willing to testify. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments this evening? Name and address for the record, sir.
Dennis Ortmann, 510 Burl Drive. Mr. Mayor and councilors, I originally thought I was going to start this evening by offering you all a new pen, but you would probably have some fear of a former consular bringing gifts. I am not going to talk to you about the issues directly in front of you because I am confident that you know you're well-positioned for a great legacy. You certainly are in a great position to finish the library. You're in a great position to put a footprint that is even larger in community park and you certainly, this evening, can lend your voice to human dignity. I came, however, to invite you and invite the community to an event that's happening on Saturday, and Mike has already given you some introduction to this. We would invite you to the Orchid Awards that will take place at noon outside the Idaho, the First Territorial Capital Replica and Interpretive Center on 12th and Main. It will take place at noon. And a very brief ceremony. And after that ceremony, I would also invite you to join historians Gary Bush and Steve Branting, who will be doing a trolley car tour. It's a $25 tour. The tickets for that are available at the Bell Building. And there will be, there may be, if there are any left, an opportunity to buy some tickets on-site, but at the moment, we know that there are fewer than 15. Every year, we in Lewiston have an opportunity to celebrate people who go above and beyond in the area of spending money and resources to respect history. We have an Excellence in History Preservation Award that will go to the New City Library and other that will go to Lewis Clark State College for the remodeling of the Thomas Jefferson Hall. We certainly will recognize the efforts in the area of cultural heritage preservation of Mr. Stuart Johnson and the 2012-2013 high school students who were instrumental in helping us get the Capitol finished, the Lewiston Tribune that has done a stellar job in its historical feature sections and in its support of history projects in the community. Also, Mr. Joe Stromeyer for his heritage radio campaigns. And although we know that it is certainly a beginning of the project for Mr. Brigham, we're giving some recognition for our contribution to historical preservation, even though we know it's not finished, for the work on the apartments that so many people thought would fall into total disrepair at 212 Fifth Street. I encourage you to join us and would welcome all of you. It will be a delightful time. Please bring your lawn chairs. Join us for a few minutes. A great time to get together. We'll get used to using that area outside the Capitol to celebrate many events. And I would also, as I close today, I had an opportunity to spend some time at the memorial service for one of the former city council members, Bob Roberts, and I would hope that all of you would bow your hearts in some recognition of all the work that he did for the city of Lewiston over the years. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Craig Emerson. I live at 222 North Prospect Boulevard in Lewiston. At the last meeting, I spoke about the proposed new section to ordinance 4614 and the fines of up to $1,000 and jail terms of up to one year. I stated at that meeting that I believe this proposal is a bad law. I would like to restate my position more clearly and address some of the comments made by other citizens and council members. As a preface to my opposition to this proposed change, I do want people to know that I am a Christian. Jesus Christ is my Lord and Savior. I believe in the God of the Bible, and I believe the Bible to be God's word. I don't want people to think that I am a homophobic religious zealot. There was a gentleman who spoke at the last meeting about the love he had seen in this community. There was a fundraiser held so that he could obtain medical services to save his life, and he professes to be gay. I was at that fundraiser. I contributed my time and money for his cause, and I prayed that the medical help he received would save his life. Several citizens supported this proposed law, even some who profess to be Christians. A common theme was that opposition to this ordinance is the same as opposition to the civil rights movements with respect to discrimination against blacks and other minorities. I have never supported discrimination against minorities, but this is not the same. The civil rights movement was about who people are. This issue is about what people do. There's a big difference between who you are and how you choose to conduct your life. There are gay people in my life that I love, but I can't agree with the way some of them live their lives because God's word says that an active homosexual relationship is wrong. I don't chase them down to confront them about their activities, but I hope to discuss God's word with them and love when the opportunity arises. I oppose this ordinance because it jeopardizes religious freedom. It can put citizens in the position of having to choose between being faithful to their religious convictions or going to jail. If I am a Christian and hold to the truths of the Bible, I should not be compelled to conduct business in situations that violate my beliefs, especially under the penalty of fines and imprisonment. This ordinance infringes the rights of citizens to act in accordance with their beliefs in the God of the Bible. Mr. Kleberg stated that he doesn't understand why this should be such a big deal. Mr. Kleberg, this country was founded on the principle of religious freedom. How can you state that a proposed law that jeopardizes the religious freedom of its citizens is not a big deal? Mr. Maldonado would have you think that no one will really spend a year in jail because of this ordinance. Mr. Maldonado, if these criminal penalties are not for real, why are they in the ordinance? Mr. Blakely wants to make sure the council is representing everyone, not just minority positions. Mr. Blakely, doesn't everyone also include those citizens who believe in the Bible and don't you intend to represent them as well? Even if you don't hold with the truths of the Bible, do you not intend to uphold the religious freedom of all citizens? I encourage all of the councilors who currently support this new law to reconsider your positions, especially with respect to the criminal penalties proposed. Are you going to support the abridgement of religious freedom on your watch? Are you going to support sending people to jail for exercising their religious freedom? Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Joyce Shuenke, 922 and 1/2 Linden Avenue. Mayor and councilman, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to speak about gravity. We can't taste it, touch, see, hear, or smell it. It's not impacted whether or not we know it exists, or whether we think it's outdated or believe we're somehow exempt from it. It will impact us. There are many other natural and spiritual laws out there that we cannot see, taste, feel, and they impact us. Letting parents create rules and set boundaries for their children because we recognize that they are not able to see all the impact of their decisions. I recently heard a story. There was a war in a village, and when the war ended, people were finally able to get back to their lives, sort of. Buried among that village were landmines. And so some people went out doing their daily work, hit one of those, some were maimed, some were killed outright, some were killed slowly. One night, the leader of the village had a dream that showed where all those landmines were. So he wrote up the map and shared it with everybody in the village who would listen so they could avoid those landmines and live a happy life. Our God is a loving parent, knows, and He created us, and He knows what makes us tech better than anything else. Also created a map so that we could avoid landmines of life. Let's just look at a few. Because one, no sex outside of marriage. What would this do? Well, gosh, wouldn't have all these unwed mothers. Medicaid expenses would be much lower. Wouldn't need all this free housing. Wouldn't have broken families. Read a statistic earlier last year, 50% of kindergarteners are in a single-parent home, single-mother home. It didn't mention if some of those were widows, but that's still ridiculously high. Wouldn't have AIDS, wouldn't have all these other sexually transmitted diseases out there. Wouldn't need WIC, wouldn't need foot stamps, wouldn't have all these destroyed lives. Another one, Exodus 2012. Children, honor your father and mother, whether or not they deserve it. But also, that's not just for the children. Husbands, you're supposed to love your wife as Christ loved the church. Treat her well. Don't abuse her, don't intimidate her. And wives are to honor their husbands and respect them. This is the picture of a healthy family, and a society is only as healthy as the families that are in it. And government does a good part to make this worse. You don't like your family? Get pregnant. Will provide you free housing, free food, free medical. You don't have to relate to your family. You don't have to keep relationships intact. That's not a good thing. We're destroying families. If families would stand tight, we wouldn't have the broken homes. Once again, Medicaid would be lower, food stamps, wouldn't need the HUD programs. Make a huge difference. I realize these are all complicated issues, and they're not really for government to solve, they're for the church to solve. Wow, church doesn't have that kind of money. Yeah, it does. Another rule that God said was tied through 10%.
Please summarize, Ms. Shuenke.
Okay. God also says that homosexuality is wrong, is in the Bible. Many claim this ordinance will not harm or affect anybody. Tell that to the photographer in New Mexico who was forced to photograph a homosexual wedding, totally against its moral beliefs, or the cake decorator also forced to serve at a homosexual wedding, or the T-shirt preparer. So, once again, gravity. Consider carefully the gravity of the decision you're making. It has implications and it has ripples that you do not even know about or cannot see. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Coughlin. I live on Preston Avenue in the orchards, and I want to totally agree with that gentleman that come down here. I also am a born-again Christian, and I want you guys to know, and everybody else in here, that is for this vote to go through, it's not only a flesh and blood vote, but it is a spiritual vote. One day, all of us are going to stand before God Almighty, and He's going to ask you, seven people, men, why did you pass that bill? And the excuse that you're going to give Him ain't going to matter one iota. So just think about it.
Chris Cosby, Lewiston, Idaho, 3032 Cypress. Last meeting, the city council voted to approve a sexual orientation ordinance. Using the guise of fairness, government is now picking winners and losers. What happened to the marketplace of ideas and economics, of freedom to choose without government force? If I choose not to rent my property to a political ideology like the KKK, everyone cheers. If I choose not to rent my property to a sexual ideology, I will be fined and sent to jail. So what is the problem? Has anyone locally been discriminated against? No one on the council or in the audience knew of any incident, so why do we need an ordinance to solve a problem that does not exist? By passing this ordinance, government gets bigger, more intrusive, while choice and property rights are taken. Is government picking the winners the answer to everything? Do we need government deciding what freedom is and how we are to practice our sexuality? Big government, rather than bringing peace with this ordinance, brings us a stick with which both viewpoints can beat each other. I address this to the gay and lesbian community. Let me ask you a question. If this ordinance passes, will you be viewed as the people of the stick, people of intolerance to those of opposing views? If this ordinance passes, will a community view you as the good guys or the bad guys with a stick who are going to beat the rest of us into submission? Realize this, that the stick swings both ways. If I should perceive that the gays are discriminating against me in any way, I will bring charges and you will pay the fine and go to jail. Or you'll be sent to a reeducation class, beg for my forgiveness, pledge never to do it again, and after groveling in the dirt, you'll only be fined $145. It gets worse. Let's look at exemption 38.5, which in part reads, "Moreover, this ordinance shall be construed and applied in a manner consistent with the First Amendment jurisprudence regarding the freedom of speech, association, and the exercise of religion." Exercise of religion. With that wording, you can't touch me because if in the exercise of my religion forbids me from the promotion, support, or supply of what is viewed as an immoral event, I'm protected from prosecution. Now, I have the stick. If you refuse me, do you want me holding the stick? I'm going to tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to throw down the stick. Will you put yours down? All I ask is you to tell your city council to vote no and don't allow the stick to be placed in my hands. Has the stick ever been used? Jesse pointed out last week that it had. He said, no one has gone to jail, yet, but where it hit with the, but where it hit, but where it hit with the reeducation and lesser fine. It's not a question of if the stick will be used, it's when and which group will be beaten first. City council. A vote no is a vote for peace and freedom for all people. Let the marketplace of ideas and economics decide the outcome, not government force. Vote no, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Tom Schumaker. I live at 1632 Eighth Avenue here in Lewiston. I've come to urge you all to vote yes for the nondiscrimination ordinance. I've spoken before. I would like to add two things. My family came to the United States of America because they needed to escape the results of religious liberty in another place, and they came here because they knew that in this place, there was a separation of church and state that was upheld by law. In my family, that was very attractive, that idea, and they came here to make a life and they stayed here. I'm not here to debate whether or not there is such a thing as church and state. I'm just telling you what my family's dream was. In this ordinance, we see that this affords protection for people who may be discriminated against for various reasons and for various beliefs. And it specifically states that that protection is for discrimination pointedly at people because of their sexual orientation or their gender expression, not for any other reason. And we see that familial status has been added to this, which is a very thankful thing, and I support it heartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name's Amy Canfield. I live at 917 Seventh Avenue. I spoke before, but I again just want to urge you to pass this. Discrimination has happened. We may not see it. There may not be signs. It's subtle discrimination. People may not feel free to come forward and tell you their stories because they might have someone react against them until they are legally protected. I would just urge you to pass this, just for the basic rights of everyone. Thank you.
Trey Turner, 4054 Fairway Drive. I don't think it's any secret you guys know how I feel on the ordinance. I'm speaking in favor of the ordinance. There's a couple of things I'd like to address. We hear a lot about what these fines are and these jail times. The misdemeanor that this ordinance covers is the base layer bottom misdemeanor, and it's there because the civil penalties that could be incurred are much, much higher and much greater than what a criminal penalty could be. It's actually there for the protections of the businesses, as I understand it. As a misdemeanor, there's a few other laws within the city that you may not be aware of that are misdemeanors. First, ripping a library book has the exact same penalty. Nobody goes to jail for ripping a library book. If you leave your garbage can on the street 24 hours after it's taken, that's the same penalty. You could go to jail for that, but nobody does. If your dog defecates in the park, it's the exact same penalty. Nobody goes to jail for that. Nobody gets fined that much amount of money. It's there as a precaution, not because that's what people actually do. We had a conversation about rights. There's a conversation about whether this ordinance will take away your right to do what you will with your property. There's a difference between controlling your property and regulation, as it were be. Does, I guess the analogy that I think of is, does a stop sign infringe on your right to drive your car? I don't think that it does. Maybe, maybe you disagree. We also talked about the religious rights. I don't think that there's any question about whether you can freely exercise your religion. If your religion says that you must hire only slaves and family members, are you allowed to hire slaves? I don't think so. Your right to swing your fist ends at the other person's nose. By refusing, by not being allowed to discriminate, that doesn't mean you're not freely able to exercise your beliefs. There's a difference there. On the issue of whether we have a problem or not, I've heard from people that we do have a problem, but they can't actually talk about it. But my main point is that we shouldn't have to wait until there's something in the paper to deal with it. We shouldn't have to wait until we are the problem child and we have this big issue and we're all in the papers before we decide to take it up. We should be getting in front of that. That's what we're here for. Also, basic rights shouldn't be left up to the free market. I'm sorry. That's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. My name is Candace Martinez, 557 Park Street, Lewiston, Idaho. I didn't really have anything prepared, but as a gay citizen of Idaho, I think to discriminate against somebody for being who they are, I knew I was gay the moment I looked at another woman. That's something about me that I cannot and will not change because you think your God is telling you that I need to be something else, or your God is making you feel that you need to discriminate, you need to cast down your fists to hurt somebody or to be undignified. I think when I stand in front of God, being a Christian my whole life, He's going to say, Candace, my child, why are you here? Why, what do you think you are worthy or made you worthy of being here, of being in my presence? And I'm going to say, because I loved another person with every fiber of my being. I was good my whole life, and when I made a decision, it wasn't based on hate. It wasn't based on their race or their religion or how they were brought up. It was because of who they are as a person, how good they are. I don't want to be that person that's standing up there that is standing behind hate. Hate isn't going to bring us together. If we can just accept that you're different and that you're different and everybody can just accept that we are all individuals here trying to come together as a unified front, if we can just be a unified front, don't you think that's the world you want to live in? That you can just walk down the street holding, if I can walk down the street in this town holding my girlfriend's hand, that's not just going to make me so happy, but it's going to show her that I love her. And you know how many times that I have to be like, honey, I love you, but I don't want somebody to be like, you dyke, or you lesbian, or go to hell, because that's happened. I want to be able to hold her hand and be proud and to not be afraid that I'm going to be assaulted or hurt because I am who I am. I can't even describe or say how many times I've been discriminated against in the last five years that I've lived here. I've moved here from Oregon and I didn't even know what discrimination was, and I'm I don't, it's like, I've had to be like, do I really want to work at my job? Do I really want to live in this state? Because of how many times I've been discriminated against. And it's just, it's ugly. Let's just choose to live respectfully among each other with dignity and grace and peace. If you don't want to rent your place to somebody, don't do it. If you don't want to take photos of somebody because they're gay, you're not being dragged there by a ball and chain. You're not being, you know, held with a gun. With a gun.
Could you please summarize?
Yes. I think that equality for all and justice for all is what you guys should be praising and you should do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Louis Sylvester. I live in Lewiston at two oh three Sixteenth Avenue. I'm in favor of personal freedom. I believe in freedom. I believe in freedom of religion. That being said, I also believe that my personal freedom does not allow me to infringe upon your freedom. And as soon as we start to cross those lines, we create the need for government. And that's why we have government, is to make sure that all of our freedoms, every citizen, receives the rights that are afforded to Americans. One of those rights is freedom of religion, the freedom to believe what you want to believe. And if the government tells you something that you don't agree with, then you hold on to your belief and God will judge you accordingly. You're not going to go to hell because the government told you to do something. However, if the government doesn't stand for every citizen, then the government is not serving its purpose. It is your job as a government to protect every citizen equally. And if you feel that there are not need, there's not a need for laws that protect against discrimination, perhaps it's because you haven't been personally discriminated against and haven't seen them. I haven't seen them. I have not been discriminated against. I'm a white man, I'm straight. It's easy for me. I walk down the street with my wife's hand in my hand, and nobody yells at me, nobody says anything to me. I don't think I'm better than anybody else. And so if someone else is unable to experience those rights, I think it's your job as a government agency to protect those people. And I would hope that you would do that. Thank you.
Leanne Keller, twenty-three twenty-eight Eleventh Avenue. Please just remember that we don't all have the same religion, and please vote for the equality of all people. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Have anybody else? If people want to speak, please kind of get in the queue so we can move on to our business this evening. Thank you.
Hello, and my name is Paul Stewart. I live at twenty-eight seventy-five Grandview Drive in Clarkston, Washington. However, I am a native of Lewiston, born on Main Street, well, not actually Main Street, White Hospital, which was on Main Street. Lewiston High School, class of nineteen fifty-eight, U of I sixty-two. I was away from the valley for thirty-nine years and I return to the place I love. I was married in the church across the lawn, and I'll be buried down the street. I thank the council for this opportunity to give a few additional comments. I also absolutely commend this council collectively and individually for addressing this topic and with respect and an open mind. I just can't tell you how much I appreciate that. It's unfortunate, however, that this council even has to, to address this because if the Idaho legislation, legislatures had done their job and just added the words, instead of stonewalling it, this would be probably a law for throughout the state of Idaho. So it's left to this council to be stand up and to address this, and I admire you for doing that. In many cultures, individual property values just simply didn't exist. I'm sure the Indians who sold Manhattan, the land that Manhattan is on, thought they really put one over on the white people because it wasn't their culture to have individual property rights. Today, we put up fences to protect and to define what is ours and to keep out dangers or perceived dangers. Now, property rights are very important, but when a person or entity is hiring employees or serving meals to the public, they're in a public sphere. And at that point, it is my belief that prop, that human rights trump property rights. I want to say that again. In those instances, when you're renting out homes and that type of thing, human rights trump property rights, in my opinion, every time. It's wrong to discriminate because someone is of a different color, different origin, they're fat or thin, too pretty or not pretty enough, married or not married, a different faith or no faith, straight or gay, in other words, someone different than you. Why is this wrong? Well, it's wrong because all people deserve a level playing field. Person up here mentioned that he has not experienced discrimination because he's white, Caucasian, married, straight, all these things. But we also got a taste of how it feels to be discriminated against and the hurt and despair in this young lady's voice who was up here earlier. No one should be defined by their sexuality with which they were born, any more than a person born left-handed should be shunned or made to feel they're a second-class citizen or not worthy of our respect. They are our sons and daughters, our aunts and uncles, our brothers and sisters and neighbors. So why must we act now? This is not Selma, Alabama in the nineteen sixties. It's not eighteen fourteen or nineteen four, it's nineteen fourteen. When I was a living way, I, I read with a gas, whoa, I watched the Aryan Nation hijack Idaho's reputation with their message of hate and divisiveness. Today, this council has a rare opportunity to send out a clear message to the world that Lewiston, your home, and the city of my birth, is a place of love and compassion where people are treated with respect on an open, even playing field. No one is asking for any more than this or any less, no special treatment or privileges. Our constitution provides for it, and the Jesus I know teaches it.
Sir, could you please summarize?
I urge each, each of you to reach into your heart and do the right thing. Please vote yes.
Can I step up again?
No, sir.
Okay.
You had your shot. We're gonna have one more reading in a couple of weeks. Then please get in line, ma'am.
My name is Colleen Cosby, three zero three two Cypress Street, Lewiston. First of all, I want to say that this is not a matter of hate. It's just a matter of freedom on both sides. And I think a business owner should have the right to choose who they hire or not, who they bake cakes for, who they take photographs for, whatever, without fearing consequences from that. The main thing I wanted to say tonight was to you councilmen, remember that you were elected by people here in Lewiston, not people in Pocatello or other places in the state or other places in the country. You were elected by people here in Lewiston, Idaho, and I can promise you and tell you that the majority of people in this city do not want this ordinance to pass. Please represent the people that represent, that put you in the office and vote no. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for
Name it, name and address for the
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Nancy Coughlin, and I live at Preston Avenue. And I want to thank you gentlemen for your time and consideration of this matter. And I think we got into some areas that really didn't need to be addressed because I just feel like we just need to look at this. I don't, sometimes I get discouraged because I don't think the government, a lot of times, need to get into personal business. I think our properties are individuals. I think their business is their decision, who they want to rent to and who they don't want to rent to, is an individual's decision and not other people's decision. And so I agree, I don't think that we should, everybody make decisions for our neighbors. I shouldn't be making a decision for my neighbor as who they want to rent to or not. That would be their decision. And so I don't think you should be making a decision for everybody in town who they should want to rent to. So I would ask you to vote no on this. Also, I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, just so everybody knows, we do have one more reading. We'll have plenty of time to talk. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your comments, both sides of the issue. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I'll accept a motion to read the consent agenda, councillor. Oh, do we have anything we want to move to the active?
Item C.
Item C? Item C will become active item J.
It's actually K.
I H I J.
J J K, right? Is this the new one?
Oh, yep, it would be K. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Accept a motion to read the consent agenda as amended?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Accepting the minutes of the June eighteenth Parks and Recreation Commission, September third Transportation Advisory Board, and the May fourteenth, two thousand fourteen Youth Advisory Commission. Approving Resolution two thousand fourteen dash fifty-three by title only. A resolution pursuant to Idaho Code, Section sixty-seven, twenty-eight oh eight two, declaring the intent of the city council to award a sole-source contract for self-contained breathing apparatus to General Fire Apparatus of Spokane, Washington, and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution two thousand fourteen dash fifty-five by title only. A resolution accepting and approving an easement from Dale Marshall and Lisa Marshall, husband and wife, and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution two thousand fourteen dash fifty-six by title only. A resolution accepting and approving an easement from Janice L. Buck, a single person, and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution two thousand fourteen dash fifty-seven by title only. A resolution accepting and approving an easement from the Port of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation, and providing an effective date. Approving the second reading of Ordinance forty-six fifteen by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, Section thirty-five dash thirty-two four, increasing the speed limit on a section of Old Spiral Highway from twenty-five miles per hour to thirty-five miles per hour, and providing an effective date. Approving the first reading of Ordinance forty-six seventeen by title only. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC oh four fourteen, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density, excuse me, residential zone R two and included in the regional commercial zone C six, and providing an effective date. Approving the second reading of Ordinance forty-six seventeen by title only. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC oh four fourteen, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential R two zone and included in the regional commercial zone C six, and providing an effective date. Approving the first reading of Ordinance forty-six eighteen by title only. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC five fourteen, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential R two zone and included in the regional commercial C six zone, and providing an effective date. Approving the second reading of Ordinance forty-six eighteen by title only. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC oh five fourteen, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential R two zone and included in the regional commercial C six zone, and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable dated August twenty-ninth, two thousand fourteen, through September eleventh, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one million, two hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, councillors, the consent agenda's been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Seven to zero. Okay, moving on to the active agenda. First up is the reason statement for ZC fourteen dash, or oh four fourteen, Kumar and AAA Washington, and this is approving the reason statement for ZC oh four fourteen. I'll entertain a motion to, oh, make the reason statement?
To approve.
To approve. Okay.
If I could have in that motion, yeah.
The reason why we want to approve it.
In this statement or whatever you relied upon in order to make your motion.
I'll entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Councillor Daniel?
For the reason stated in the reason statement.
Per P and Z, I guess? Okay. So we've, motion to second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Same thing, except a reason statement for zone change oh four dash fourteen, oh.
It's actually oh five.
Oh five, that's my agenda was incorrect, I'm sorry. Approving the reason statement for ZC oh five dash fourteen. Entertain a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Councillor Daniel?
Same reason for the, for the items listed in the reason statement.
Okay. Further discussion? All those in favor of approving the reason statement for ZC oh five dash fourteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Do we have an electronic device being run?
Joel.
Joel?
Sorry?
Are you kidding me? Thank you.
What's the score?
The volume. Are the bears up? I was just curious. They were when they left. Okay. Getting back to business here. Item C, potential third reading and adoption of Ordinance forty-six seventeen, which is implementing the council's decision in ZC oh four dash fourteen, declaring that certain real property be removed from the R two low-density residential zone and included into the C six regional commercial zone for Kumar. I would entertain a motion to read Ordinance forty-six seventeen for the third time, suspending the rules, by title only, suspending the rules. Thank you.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of Ordinance forty-six seventeen by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZC oh four fourteen, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential R two zone and included in the regional commercial C six zone, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councillors, Ordinance forty-six seventeen has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution, or Ordinance forty-six seventeen by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Item D, Ordinance forty-six eight Item D, Ordinance 4618, potential third reading and adoption, implementing the Council's decision in ZC05-14, declaring that certain real property be removed from the R2 low-density residential zone and included in the C6 regional commercial zone, again for the same area. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4618 for the third time, by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Approving the third reading of Ordinance 4617 by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance implementing the City Council's decision in ZC0514, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential R2 zone and included in the regional commercial C6 zone, and providing an effective date.
Okay, councillors, the Ordinance 46, or, I'm sorry, yeah, 4618 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance 4618 by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll just make one brief comment. I appreciate staff bringing this to us so that we could get through the three readings. We heard about this a few weeks ago, and through procedural, or the process anyways, the gentleman that's trying to put in a dialysis center was kind of held up a little bit, and I really appreciate the Council's votes on this so that Mr. Kumar can get going with his project and thereby saving people a lot of travel time out of the area to receive their dialysis. So, thank you. That being said, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Okay, so that's the next one. 14-60, thank you. Next item up is item E, Resolution 2014-58. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2014-58 to read. Excuse me, second. Jamie?
I'm sorry?
On 2014-58, the resolution?
Yes.
I thought we were just approving, not reading, or?
It's not necessary to read a resolution the way it is in ordinance. So, you can have a motion to approve in a second, and then you can go to discussion and then decide if you want to approve it.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that? Entertain a motion to approve 2014-58, approving contracts for fire protection between the City of Lewiston and the Lewiston Roundup Association, Lewiston Livestock Market, Waller Enterprises, Lorraine Ravery, and Charmaine Allen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion?
One question.
Councillor Blakely.
Uh, I believe, Fire Chief, those are all one-year contracts, correct? Or multi-year contracts that they're signing now?
They're more than a year. They're overdue unless we determine.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And, uh, next resolution would be 2014-60. This is approving a fire, a contract for fire protection between the City of Lewiston and ATK. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any discussion? Hey, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Okay. Uh, item F, or I guess that's, I've got an old one apparently. H, item G. J, thank you. Item G, Ordinance 4614, second reading of Ordinance 4614, enacting a new section to the city code to be codified as Chapter 38, Sections 1 through 7, prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, public accommodations based upon familial status, sexual orientation, and/or gender identity slash expression. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4614 for the second time, uh, by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Randall?
I'd like to make a motion to make two amendments to the proposed Ordinance 4614. The, I handed out to each councillor a copy on page four under item G of definitions, place of public resort, accommodation, and assembly. I would like to delete the whole section G, and that will also continue on to the top of the page on page five. And the second amendment, or second part of that amendment, is to go to page six on exceptions and add to B, item three and four. Item three being two private clubs or other establishments not in fact open to the public, or four, two religious organizations or entities controlled by religious organizations, including places of worship.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to amend Ordinance 4614, deleting item G and adding, uh, two items to Section 38.5 for exceptions. Motion's been made and seconded. Do, we have some discussion on that?
Can I bring, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Reason I brought up the, the two exceptions is under Title II of the United States Civil Rights Act of 1964, those two items are included on their exceptions under Title II. So, I thought it was appropriate that we also include it in ours.
Okay. Other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to ask the city attorney a question. I noticed that part of the amendment is not only just adding those two sections, but deleting all of section G. Could you tell us what practical effect of that would be?
Well, would, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager, it would completely eliminate any impact of the ordinance on, uh, public accommodations, assembly, uh, for public resorts, assemblies, or amusements.
Mr. Mayor, I disagree. Section, uh, section C, full enjoyment of, should cover that because it goes into, full enjoyment of shall be construed to include but not limited to the right to use, rent, or purchase real property, any service, commodity, or article, or personal property offered or sold by any person or establishment to the public, and the admission of any person to accommodations, advantages, facilities, or privileges of any place of public resort, accommodation, assembly, or amusement, without acts directly or indirectly causing persons of any particular familiar status, sexual orientation, or gender identity slash expression to be treated as not welcome, accepted, desired, or solicited. So, that pretty much covers the same thing that G covered, except G gets very detailed. You're talking about elevators and a bunch of other things.
It is detailed and, and more inclusive. I would agree that there, there is an opportunity to interpret C to include all of that, but, um, item G certainly is, is a lot more detailed and more specific in terms of what's protected.
I'm sorry to get at that point.
Okay. Further discussion? Councillor Malinato?
Councillor, um, just point of clarification. So, if we strike G, that is the definition for, on page one, where it says, "That is a lot of feedback." Public accommodations, it's in the title of the ordinance, and so if we strike it in G, which is the definition of that, that would be my understanding that we'd also have to strike it from the, from the title of the ordinance itself. Is that what you're intending to do?
Well, because it would still be protect, it would still be included in the full enjoyment of.
Well, and also, just point of retort, um, we put familial status in there, and nobody was comfortable moving forward without a definition for familial status. So, I mean, I wouldn't be comfortable with moving forward with a public accommodations unless there was a definition for it. So, that would be, I would not support your amendment.
Councillor Blakely?
A question for the city attorney. We heard talk about protecting people's rights on both sides and making sure the issue is clear, so all parties know what we're talking about. By taking G out, does it make it less clear?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think what Mr. Malinato just indicated, this is a part of the definition section. So, if you take it out, what you're left with is no definition of what a public accommodation is, and an opportunity for it to be interpreted to exclude public accommodations, which was, I guess, my original point. Um, the ordinance talks about public accommodations in, in a number of locations, and without a definition, you certainly are left with the opportunity to exclude that when it comes to the point of, of interpretations, especially when there was some specific act to exclude that if you pass the amendment. Full enjoyment, it simply, it does reference public accommodations, but you don't have a specific definition of public accommodations at that point.
So, again, in a court, in a court of law, we've heard a lot of talk about law tonight. In a court of law, again, this would protect both parties better. Better's not a good word to use, but it would protect both parties.
Certainly, if you have a specific definition, it's always better for both sides in the argument. If you have a specific definition of something, then it, it leaves less to the court to try to interpret at that point.
Without it?
Greater protection.
Without it presents greater problems for both parties.
I believe that would be.
Greater gray area. And does it, does it increase the gray area?
Yes, I think it's confusing without it.
I guess I'd offer that, you know, if, if this, if this passes, I mean, I would be more comfortable having as many definitions and dotted i's and crossed t's than lessening it, so. That's where I'm at. Further discussion? Councillor Daniel?
I do have a question. I got in here today, it was my first time seeing this proposed amendment. Did, Councillor Malinato or city attorney Shopshire, did you two discuss this before the meeting started?
I haven't seen it. I mean, other than, somebody just showed me what it was.
You saw it, I saw it.
So, you guys didn't have any conversation in regards to it?
Counselor?
I didn't get a copy of it, so.
Counselor, it was brought to this meeting, handed out at this meeting.
Further discussion? Okay, those in favor of amending Ordinance 4614 by deleting definition G and adding to the exceptions, say aye?
Aye.
Three.
Opposed? Nay?
Nay.
We have show of hands?
For what?
In favor? Okay. Motion fails, four to three. Back to the original ordinance. We're still in discussion. Councillor Daniel?
I've asked this at every work session and while at the first reading as well. I'd still like to know, you know, as a government body, we're passing a law, in theory, to solve a problem, not create new ones, and I'm just curious, what, what businesses are currently discriminating in the City of Lewiston? I sincerely would like to know, one, because I'm gonna be voting on something, but it's two, so I don't shop there. I certainly don't want to shop somewhere that is discriminating against people based on their sexual orientation. But, I would really like to know what problem, what businesses are we trying to address? We're, I, I'm assuming this is kind of a message to the business community that they're apparently not doing their job, they're treating people unfairly. I'd just really like to know what businesses in this town are discriminating. I didn't think I'd get an answer. So, I'll move on. I would like to propose amendment to Section 38 dot five, exceptions, um, that, under, under section B of that section, number three, to read, "When this ordinance conflicts with deeply held religious views of the parties involved."
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to amend Ordinance 4614 by adding another exception under 38-5B. Could you state that again?
Uh, "When this ordinance conflicts with deeply held religious views of the parties involved."
Is everybody clear on that? Discussion? Councillor Daniel?
Though I certainly wouldn't agree that discriminating against somebody is the right thing to do. I do believe that boycotts and education are a better way to end discrimination. I think that's worked out in recent years, certainly around the nation. That's why you've seen more and more states finally recognizing gay marriage. You even have a council here ready to pass an ordinance that you can't even list a business that is actively discriminating in the City of Lewiston. However, I also believe as elected officials, we, we need to protect people's religious rights, and if, I just want to make sure that nobody would be able to go to jail for up to six months for taking their religion further than Sunday service.
Okay. Further discussion? Councillor Blakely?
Question for your city attorney. That ordinance, that amendment that's being proposed, could it also be used, could it be used then to make an argument against any of the, the federal discrimination, where we talk about race, color, disabilities, sex? Could that same, could that argument then be taken further and used there too? And say, "My religion doesn't think has a problem with color."
Those arguments have been made, Councillor Blakely, before. The, there are, there is a specific religious exemption that's contained in Title VII that has to do with, it's called the pastoral exemption.
Mm-hmm.
But it applies not to individuals, but to religious organizations. So, religious organizations have the right to hire someone in their organization if they're directly responsible, say, to religious education or pastoral duties. But, that does not extend to, for instance, the janitor, who's not involved in religious education. So, that exception exists in Title VII right now for religious, bona fide religious organizations, but it doesn't apply to individuals. So, individuals are, again, not permitted to discriminate on the basis of all the Title VII things, age, race, gender, based on simply a religious belief that's on.
I guess my, my only concern with that, councillor, is that I think that potentially opens up a can of worms, and I'm not trying to make light of your comments at all, believe me when I say this, but I remember having a, a rather contentious planning and zoning meeting, and there was a, a group wanted to put a wedding chapel up in the orchards, and it wasn't sitting real well with some of the neighbors. So, one of the neighbors finally got up and, you know, we can, it might be a stretch, but he got up and said that, you know, hey, I guess if he gets to do that, then I'm gonna start the Church of the Holy Storage Units, and I'm gonna build them right there in my yard. So, maybe that's his religious conviction. I mean, where do you, where do you define that? Deeply held religious conviction? I mean, I, you know what I mean?
I think the courts have also recognized established religions as well.
Okay, all those in favor of amending? Okay, all those in favor of amending ordinance 4614 by including thirty, section 38.5 under exceptions, B, number three, except when conflicts with deeply held religious views, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails four to three. So back to the original. And we're still in discussion. For the second reading of 4614, do we have further discussion? Counselor Collins?
Mr. Mayor, I just kind of want to ask Jed on his original one, because we voted for both those amendments at the same time with number three and number four that you had on section 38.5. Was, is this something either for Jed or for the city attorney? Is this something that is already covered by Title VII, numbers three and four?
I'm sorry, Counselor Collins, are you referring to the proposed?
The first amendment, it was actually in two pieces that were put together, the striking out of section G, and then I believe also-
I don't have the language for that, so I didn't get a copy.
I'm sorry.
So I'd have to take a look at it.
Page six.
Number four is embodied in the religious pastoral exception for Title VII. If a bona fide religious organization can, in fact, hire people only of that religion if they're involved in religious education or pastoral duties.
Okay.
It does not extend to some of the other things that religious, for instance, if they operated a store, they couldn't discriminate based upon religion, if there was a religious, even organization that operated a store. Private clubs or other establishments not in fact open to the public, and I, you know, I have not looked at the Title II reference. Maybe Mr. Randall, I could pull that up. There are, there's a case that involves the Boy Scouts in which they were allowed to discriminate based upon the fact that they provided a direct kind of educational service to the scouts involved. And that discrimination was based on sexual orientation. So there is some case law that would support that, but it's more specifically worded in the case, and I could bring that case up for you, I have it, but, so there is some justification for strictly private clubs involved in some kind of service.
So you're saying there's legal evidence to indicate that number three here is potentially an appropriate amendment to this type of an ordinance?
I guess potentially appropriate is an interesting sort of choice of words. One of the things that has happened when that particular exemption has been granted is that there's a great outbreak in private clubs, simply to avoid having to comply with the ordinance. So there is that risk to be run. And I, and if what you wanted to do was to add some language that says something like consistent with the Boy Scouts of America, then I can get the citation for that. And some, there are some ordinances nationwide that have added that language in that's consistent with the Boy Scouts of America case. You would probably cover what has legally been allowed, so, and I can get you that citation if you'd like.
Mr. Randall, did you have a specific intention with these?
Well, they're, just because they are included in the Title II of the Civil Rights Act of 64, on that, private clubs, if you go to 42 U.S.C., section 2000, part A, subpart E, it makes reference to private clubs.
Well, I would say that, I would be supportive of adding these amendments if the council would consider these as separate entities compared to what was originally proposed.
Both three and four?
Both three and four.
So you're making a motion to include three and four?
I would make a motion that we include three and fours amendments to the original.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. To add, under section 38.5, exceptions, section B, to add three to private clubs or other establishments not in fact open to the public, or four to religious organizations or entities controlled by religious organizations, including places of worship, which I guess we've already said was already covered.
I didn't hear the last part, I'm sorry.
Well, it's already covered under section seven of the Civil Rights Act. This proposed number four.
Title VII?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah.
She said not in.
That's covered by, and it's actually covered in your ordinance as well. Under 38.5A, should not be construed and applied to any matter consistent with the First Amendment, freedom of speech, association of religion, exercise of religion.
Counselor Daniel?
I disagree. It says, it's not intended to alter or abridge other rights. Well, intended doesn't necessarily, I mean, it doesn't. I think these would actually spell it out a little bit clearer.
Okay. So motion's been made and seconded, further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
I did not vote here. I'm still thinking. Excuse me.
The clock's ticking.
I vote for it.
Okay. So the motion carries six to one. Okay, so now we're dealing with an amended ordinance 4614 now including two new lines under exceptions. Do we have further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, before you proceed, can I have somebody get me a copy of that proposed amendment? Because I don't have that in writing.
I have two.
Galvam, thanks.
For some reason.
How do we not change the?
Counselor Daniel?
Under section 38 dot six, penalties such an A, I move that we amend six months to five days.
Second. So this is an amendment to the amendment? We voted to amend, so now you want to add another amendment?
This is an amendment to the current form of the ordinance.
Okay. Five days. So we have a motion and a second, discussion? Counselor Mills and Otto?
The penalties are state code. Just want to remind everybody that this is penalty for any misdemeanor, so we're changing state code for our own beliefs, I guess.
Okay. Counselor Daniel?
Well, a couple people brought up at this point that we're not going to send anybody to jail for six months for this. We're not going to send anybody to jail. Well, why don't we spell it out? We're not going to send somebody to jail for six months. If we need to modify other ordinances, that say, if you tear out a page out of a library book, we're not going to send you to jail for six months either. Take that off, take that penalty off the table. If we're not going to do it, why have it into law?
What was the penalty for throwing candy? And I'm not trying to make light of the situation, but it was a misdemeanor too.
I agree, and that's why I tried to get it removed.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, a misdemeanor in Idaho is defined as six months in jail or $1,000 fine. That's the definition of a misdemeanor in Idaho.
But we can reduce that. We can, we can go less.
Counselor Blakely?
I stated a couple weeks ago, and I stated earlier, that I think we need to leave the teeth in this, and leave the teeth in this ordinance for various reasons. And as I said before, I don't want Lewiston to become a lightning bolt for some civic, some organizations, a hate group, or any other organization that sees Lewiston as a soft spot, where we can come in and put a sign up in the front of the window that says, "We don't serve," and you can fill in the blanks. And the worst case the person can get is a slap on the wrist, five days in jail, or whatever the penalty may be. I think we need to send a strong statement that that type of activity is not welcome in the city of Lewiston, and that's not who we want here. And, no, so I would vote no against that.
Okay. Further discussion?
Now, I forget, Counselor Blakely, how long ago was that, when that happened last time? I just want to make sure I have the dates right. It happened last week?
No, I thought I-
A year ago, two years ago?
What are we talking about? My discussion?
Your hypothetical scenario of some out-of-town group putting up a billboard that says something.
I don't believe I have ever put a date on it. I said I don't want it to ever happen. Are you asking me when it specifically happened? I think you're baiting me. But to be honest with you, what I replied to was, my answer was, I don't want it to ever happen.
And you think it would? You think we have businesses that'd do that?
I think anything's possible in this world if enough money is put in front of somebody.
I'd say I'd never thought I'd see the day that we, as a country, could have a group like the Westboro Baptist Church showing up at veterans' funerals. And I agree with Counselor Blakely on this one. It was their right, fundamentally, morally wrong. So I'll not support that.
And this ordinance wouldn't stop that?
Probably not. Okay, so those in favor of the proposed amendment changing the penalties to five days, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two. Okay, back to the original amended ordinance 4614. We're still in discussion. I guess I'll, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be voting on this. And I could see us as a society, this town, the citizens of this town are gonna be voting on this. I can see this coming a mile away. And I will say that I had a conversation a year ago with one of the counselors, and at the time, I said, you know, I don't know that we need to bring this forward, have this thing enacted. We could throw it out to the public for a vote. Things have changed a little bit, and I have no problem voting on this. But again, I also fully expect that this will end up just like what Pocatello went through, that there will be a petition circulated, people will get this on the ballot, and then we can see. But as far as I'm concerned, you know, whether you like my opinion or not, I'll vote for this ordinance, and it is what it is, and I think that we also, to be honest with you, I'm not, you know, 100% behind it. I don't think this is the defining social issue of our time, but I'm willing to vote for it. Okay? I think we have bigger fish to fry, we've got other things to do, and we've been spending a lot of time on this, and I think that's important. I'm not trying to diminish how much time we've spent on it, but I also think that it would be appropriate, and let's see where the chips fall. You know, if it gets overturned, it's overturned. There's no skin off my back. So that's, those are my comments. You know, we're responsible for, you know, the legislative authority, we set regulations in this town, we're responsible for fiscal policy, things like this. I guess by extension, we should take a stand on social issues in this town, whether it's through enacting legislation or not, or just making a moral stand in front of the public. You know, that's fine. I mean, you know, when you have a public forum, debates for city council, things like that, and you're free to state your views, people need to hear that kind of stuff so they know who they're voting for. So with that being said, I guess I'll wind up my comments and turn it over. Counselor Blakely?
I'm real happy the way the government's working right now here. Some of you out there probably aren't real happy with me, and that's fine. You know, you have an opportunity three years from now not to vote for me, and that'll be fine. And if I run again, great. If I don't, we'll get a chance to, whatever. But more importantly though, what I like, the fact is, we're debating this at the local level. We talk about less government, we talk about small government. Small government's at work right now. You would not have a chance to sit in Boise and have this discussion. They can invite you up to the podium for your three minutes of time. At best, you might get to send one of your council, your representatives, some email, and he or she or some aide will more than likely read it, and then maybe your representative will have a chance to see it, hear it. Local government's at work right now, and this, what a wonderful opportunity we have to put this topic out on the table and debate it. And it's being debated all over the state. What are we, we've been the ninth city, ninth city, I believe, now? Wouldn't it be nice if other issues that we feel strongly about that happen at the state level, we don't get a chance to voice our opinion like this? So this is government at work like it should be. Like us, don't like us, we're out there expressing opinions.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the second reading of ordinance 4614 by title only, suspending the rules as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, five to two.
We're hearing the second reading of ordinance 4614 by title only as amended. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston enacting a new section to be to the Lewiston City Code to be codified as chapters 38, section 1 through 7, prohibiting discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations based upon familial status, sexual orientation, and/or gender identity expression, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. And thank everybody for their input, and the council for a lively discussion. We have one more shot at it, so I expect to see everybody here in, when's our next?
October 27.
Because we don't have it on the 13th, so it'll be the 27th of October. And we will make sure everybody's aware of it. Thank you, everybody. Please. Next up, item H, ordinance 4594 for the third reading and possible adoption, implementing the council's decision in ZCO 4-12, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential zone, including in the community commercial zone. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4594 by title only, suspending the rules, but I'm just curious as if somebody had looked and seen who's actually signing this?
Well, you're gonna sign it, Mr. Mayor. It's somehow the third reading and adoption fell through the cracks, and so...
Okay, because there's a different mayor's name on that piece of paper.
Well, we can, no.
Didn't think I was reading them, did you?
I have your name.
I got, I have-
Online.
Kevin Pullman's name on mine.
You might have an old copy.
Thank you. Well, we got two, you only have one, so we'll change that.
Let me apologize, it just somehow dropped.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, read, ordinance 4594, third time, by title only, suspending the rules. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
We're hearing the third reading of ordinance 4594 by title only, suspending the rules. An ordinance implementing the city council's decision in ZCO 412, declaring that certain real property be removed from the low-density residential R2A zone, and included in the community commercial C3 zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston, and providing an effective date.
Okay, counselors, ordinance 4594 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4594 by title only, suspending the rules.
Sole move.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, item I, vouchers payable to Albertsons from August 29th, 14, through 9/11, 14, in the amount of $247.73. Entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable with Counselor Daniel abstaining.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. I'll turn this over to Protem Johnson.
Next item on the agenda is vouchers payable to Early Bird Supply from August 29th, 14, through September 11th, 14, in the amount of $265.21. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Sole move.
Second. Motion's been approved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six, five to, five to-
Six to zero.
Six to zero with Mayor Kleberg abstaining.
Thank you, Protem. Okay, next item would be item K from our consent agenda, which is Resolution 2014-54, declaring the attendant of the council to award a sole-source contract for a Sidewinder pump track to progressive bike ramps of Joplin, Missouri. pump track to progressive bike ramps of Joplin, Missouri. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2014-54.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, discussion? Yeah, counselor?
The reason why I asked this to be moved to the active agenda is I was curious. So this is going to be going at Sunset Park, and this is going to be just for scooters? Or?
Did you have more questions?
Yes, yeah, just a couple.
Here it is. Looks pretty cool.
Thank you, mayor, councilors. You have to apologize for me being a little hoarse. I'm still recovering from my ducks beating the cougs and being at the game on Saturday night. It wasn't as much of a blowout as I thought it was going to be, so...
And they cheated at the end, didn't they? Thank you.
Is what it is. Okay. Again, sorry, your question?
Can you just explain, so it's going to be placed at Sunset Park? Or are there going to be, you know, we're, I'm assuming we're getting this because we ban scooters at the skateboard park?
Correct, yeah. When we came to council this last spring to discuss when some individuals had come up and wanted to challenge the ordinance, the Parks and Rec Commission at that time made a statement that they would look and see what they could do to try and meet that need. So then we had a facility available. This facility is designed for scooters and bike use. It's not necessarily designed for skateboard use, so obviously our encouragement with this site will be for scooters predominantly, but also bicycles available to use it. The initial site that we would have it at would be Sunset Park. Typically, it takes, the size of this one is going to take about three to four hours to assemble or disassemble. So it is something that we would put at a location for now, but if we do find a better, suitable spot, then we can move it. That's kind of the beauty of this piece. It's something that if we see a need a couple of years down the road, or a year down the road, in another part of the community, then it can be transformed and taken elsewhere. It is a product that's been out for about six years, this company has, and they haven't had any, any returns or issues with it. So when I spoke to them about a warranty, basically it's a standard two-year, like most other products are anymore, but as far as replacement, they haven't had to replace any of these tracks, and, and guesstimate about a 10 to 15-year lifespan, depending on whether you have it outside in the winter, or if you disassemble and store it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
Is there, you said it takes three to four labor hours to move it. Is, are there any extra costs associated with that, such as renting something to move it, or?
If we change locations, no, we have equipment currently. If we wanted to change it to another site, we could load it up and take it there.
So, say there was a, say we had a little festival or something down there at the skate park?
Mm-hmm.
It'd be fairly easy to include this with the festivities at the skate park.
Yeah, that's something we could-
There's room there?
Yeah, between the city's property line and the corps' property line, there is some open space area there, just to the northwest of where the skate park is currently, that we could fit it in at.
Okay, Counselor Daniel?
Why not put it down, down by the skate park?
We always could. I mean, I'm not set on Sunset Park. I mean, the beauty of, of putting it on a tennis court there is because it is a, a surface that is rideable anyway. The downside of having it in, on a grass surface is that, you know, scooters can't immediately ride up onto it. Bikes could, but also there's damage to the turf when that happens. So that would be my, my ultimate location would be potentially like a slab somewhere, but we don't necessarily have that available. And as far as tennis courts go, we do have a fair amount of tennis courts in the valley, and Airport Park, as far as our two locations, is our most-used tennis facility.
Okay. Counselor Blakely?
It's funny you bring up tennis. I was just getting my ear chewed on here not too recent, not too long ago about tennis here in the valley. And this gentleman who I was talking to used to be the tennis coach at Pacific Lutheran, and he lives here in the valley now, and, and talking to him about our tennis courts, I believe he would disagree and say the ones up at the airport are the ones that are actually in the worst condition of the three sets of tennis courts that exist in the valley. I, I personally have not been out on either of them since my kids graduated from high school, so...
Well, there's actually five or six different outdoor facilities that are open to the public-
For tennis?
In the valley, yep. Yeah, you've got Airport Park, Sacagawea, Sunset-
Correct.
The high school, Clarkston, and then I think there's one other-
But you can't put this on school property.
What's that?
We're not going to be able to put this on school property.
No, oh, no.
Really, we're talking about two tennis courts that are public property, that are public property, city property. So my, my, I have two, have you seen, actually seen this? Have you touched it? Been, actually seen one?
One of these? Yeah, I actually rode a bicycle on one, last, almost a year ago. So I've been following this company for a couple of years now. I saw them at a national conference a few years ago, and have been kind of paying attention to some of the, some of the work that they've been doing. And obviously, the sole source side of it is because really you can't find anything else around that's built out of this type of material and withstands everything. Post Falls just put one in a few months ago, so they've got one locally. This one, we would be getting at a heavily discounted rate because it's coming out from Missouri to Seattle for, it's, it'd be a brand-new product, but it would be used over a weekend at a, at an event.
So, opening that can of worms.
Yes, I was wearing a helmet.
That's assuming it would protect you. Okay. Who's going to, are we going to, you know, we talked about enforcement earlier here already today, and we go out to the skateboard park, and I understand now the, the no, the no sign preventing razors is now gone from, the kids are joking that someone stole a sign preventing it. Are we not going to allow people on skateboards to use this? Or are we kind of opening another can of worms here? We got the haves and have-nots, and now you're going here, what are we doing?
Yeah, I don't know if we're necessarily going to ban skateboards from this facility, but it's really not a surface because of the transitions between each piece. It's, it's almost more like a scooter would be going over a bump, or kind of an inverted-
I wouldn't think staircases are the appropriate place to ride skateboards either, so I don't put anything beyond a skateboarder.
No, as far as pump tracks go, I mean, they're designed for, once you get going, to not have to pedal, or, or put your foot down. Your momentum is what moves you through this, through this surface, and the skateboard just physically can't really do that on this surface. It'd be very difficult for them to utilize it. I mean, a few of them will probably try to get on there, but they're going to find it no fun because they can't do anything.
If someone does use a skateboard on there, is there any risk of damage?
Not any different than what it might normally do. The only issue you might find is some of the ledges. If it's a certain one, part of the ledge, on the straight areas, if they try to ride one of the ledges where you can kind of see it, it undulates up and down, there might be, because of the trucks on the skateboard, you might see some, a little bit of damage there, but...
Mr. Mayor? Is it wood?
No.
Plastic?
Yeah.
Polycarbonate.
Polycarbonate, okay. I'm sure it was in there somewhere, so-
Sure.
Weatherproof, all that.
Yeah.
Further discussion?
I have a comment. I don't have any more questions, just for you.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll support this. I think it's a neat thing. I think it's a solution to a problem, but I also think it's a solution to a problem that unfortunately the majority of this council created, when we banned scooters from a perfectly acceptable skate park. And then we ignored a petition made primarily of city of Lewiston residents. Yes, there were a few residents outside the city, but the skate park was sold as a community structure, not just a city. So yes, I'll, I'll support it, but it is a prime example of unintended consequence of a bad law, with a $40,000 price tag.
Mr. Mayor, let me ask, I've got another question. Mr. Barker, have you seen it in use? I mean, how many people have you seen in a public setting on it at a time? And the reason I ask, I'm on their website, and I'm seeing how many people are actually in the process of using it once, and, I mean, the biggest picture I can find has six or seven at one time, and people standing to the side watching. I mean, my, my concern would be, it's there, but can we actually use it? You know, I mean, are we going to have a backlog of people waiting in line to pump around the track one time, and the strongest-
I guess I can kind of equate it to some similar down at the skate park, when there's certain lines that people ride, you wait your turn.
Okay.
Obviously, there's more area at the skate park currently, but that's typically what you might see down at the skate park, is some, a couple of people want to go the same line, and they'll wait their turn to get through there. That's typically what I've seen, and I've talked to some other communities, and they haven't had issues as far as, as backlogs or whatever else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, that concludes our agenda. Moving on to unfinished new business, city councilor comments. Do we have any councilor comments this evening? I've got a brief one. I got roped into giving a speech last Friday, a while back, Liz Chavis, who's well-known for working with people with disabilities and recovery issues. And she'd asked me a couple of months ago, and as time got shorter, to speak at this Hands Across the Bridges event, and it's a celebration of recovery for a lot of people here in town. I had no idea, A, what I was getting into, B, I really don't have a whole lot of experience with those issues, but I agreed, and Mayor Warren from Clarkston joined me, and for safety's sake, they decided not to hold their hands going across the Blue Bridge, which they'd been doing for a while because of the traffic. But we had it at Brackenbury, and I got down there a little bit early, and I was amazed at the turnout. There was well over 150 people, just kind of a brief head count, down there celebrating their, their sobriety, their recovery from whatever was ailing them. And it was, it was a celebration. There was a lot of fun things going on, they had a big banquet set up, and I was, I was really impressed with the, the work that these people, pretty much hosted by the North Central Health District, but a lot of the recovery clinics in town were there with their clients and stuff, and just a good, positive event for the community. So I just wanted to share that with you. Anything else? Counselor Randall?
This past weekend, I went to the Air Festival. Everybody had a great time. The kids were enthralled with the parachutists coming down from the helicopter, and everybody that went on the DC-3 had a really good time. And I wanted to thank a lot of people, probably forget some, but one of the big ones is friends of the airport, and those, those folks worked very hard to get all this arranged. And they had several other people that are not necessarily full-time friends of the airport, but they have businesses up there, and some of the flying services and mechanic shops and stuff like that were involved in helping setting this up, and, and so, yeah, it turned out very well, and it was a gorgeous day. So, it, it worked out real well. And being that the county fair was going on at the same time, we got the extra people from the county fair, or folks for coming for breakfast at the airport, watching all the events, and then going on to the county fair. So it turned out real well, and a thousand people by noon, so it turned out real well.
Great. Okay. City manager comments? Mr. Bennett?
I have one issue to bring before the council. We have been talking in the past about arranging a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and, you know, some of the issues that have also been brought up that are issues that they've been looking at as well, had to do with the issue of backyard poultry. So we are working on setting up a date. I would recommend Wednesday, October 22nd. That is a date that's available for the Planning and Zoning Commission, and we would meet at the Bell Building in Community Development upstairs on the second floor. And I will double-check the time-
5:30 is typically their time, but-
Yeah, but, you know, we could probably adjust that to make sure everyone could get there, say maybe 6 o'clock. I'll talk with Joel Plaskon about that tomorrow, but that would be the goal right now, would be to have that joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission to talk about, you know, whatever issues the council would like to, and maybe impart some direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission as they schedule their work for the coming year.
Okay. I think it's appropriate that we revisit-
Mm-hmm.
-the backyard poultry issue. Okay, advisory board and commission appointments? Do we have any this evening? Counselor Maldonado?
I have one. Maureen Manchreck for the Youth Advisory Commission. We'll finally have a quorum if we appoint her, so...
So that's your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
We have a second? All those in favor of appointing Maureen Manchreck to the Youth Advisory Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. We have any others? Okay, work session, agenda topics, do we have any new ones? October?
October 6th is our next work session. We'll have a couple of items on there. One will be to talk about the recent decision by Percy to reduce the amount of the contribution that the city of Lewiston, amongst other cities, is going to have to contribute for its older firefighter union benefit coverage that we had, retirement benefit coverage. And then we'll also have some updates from Mel Johnson at Nesspris County Emergency Services about that service, and then we'll have at least one item on the active agenda, which will be to act on recommendations from the Planning and Zoning Commission on some changes to the Cannon Crest planned unit development.
Okay. Okay, well, that concludes our agenda for this evening. I'll entertain a motion, go into executive session concerning labor negotiations and litigation under Idaho Code Section 67-23451C and F.
So moved.
Any motion made and seconded? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. We'll take a four-minute recess, and we will not be acting on this after the meeting. Is that correct?
Yes, you may ask.
We will be coming back into session? Okay. Okay.